Thank you. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 6, 2020, virtual meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a Citizens Advisory Commission to the Board of County Commissioners on Land Use Planning Matters, such as Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been met. With that, we'll start with introductions of the planning commissioners. And I will start with Doug Carmen.
Doug Carmen, District 2.
Jim Simmons.
Jim Simmons, District 3.
Kevin Pestinger.
Kevin Pestinger, District 1.
Barry Halverson.
Barry Halverson, District 2, Yelm, Washington.
Helen Wheatley.
Did you, oh, was I off?
You're off.
Helen Wheatley, District 1, sorry.
Scott Nelson.
Scott Nelson, District 3.
And I'm Eric Casino, representing District 2. With that, has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda? And if so, in a motion.
So moved.
Second. There any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing no further discussion.
I have my hand up.
Or I didn't.
I'll just jump in if I just didn't want to be rude. Yeah, I was wondering if we could add a little time at the end again to talk about the the coming agenda and yeah, I don't know if we would need to add maybe five minutes for that, like either add five minutes or take five minutes away from something else. Your other business.
We have a pretty full night, but I can't see on item 11 with calendars with agenda items for tentative and attendance. It shouldn't take us all that long. So if you want to jump in for five minutes there.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is accepted and approved. Next for this evening is an opportunity for the public to address the Planning Committee, Planning Commission. This particular portion of public communication, we are not taking any comments on public hearings that have already been held by the Planning Commission or for the public hearing that we are going to hear later today or later this evening. We will be taking public comment again during the public hearing for that particular topic. For this virtual meeting, please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the Planning Commission. I will then promote you as a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your cameras. If you're dialing in, please, please press star nine to raise your hand. And make sure to also choose the star six to unmute yourself. The three minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help track time. If you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect from Zoom and call 360-972-6785 to have your public comment heard. With that, we will look for anybody with comment tonight. And so far, it looks like Loretta Sepatton is, is, go ahead, Loretta.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am Loretta Seppenin, resident of the city of Olympia. Because you have on your agenda later on tonight, the staff showing you the priority list that the Board of County Commissioners created for the docket. It gives me the opportunity to give you two thank yous for two items that are high priority on this list and that you had a substantial influence of having the on the list, and I believe also getting it of a high priority. One is the work you did last year related to warehouses when you decided that the piecemeal approach is not the best planning and you asked the commissioners to create a docket item related to that, and that is item number two. And the other is two years ago when you decided that there was a lot more work that could be done related to saving farmland in our community. And you initiated that process, which is continuing and which I really appreciate the opportunity that the Agricultural Advisory Committee has given to a number of community members to just observe them as they converse with staff about that issue. And I'm glad to volunteer to continue to work on these topics. In fact, I, I will engage with you again as the work goes on. I thank you again for your work on those two important issues.
Thank you. Is there, is there anybody else that would like to, like to speak? John Woodford, I see you're up. Go ahead, please.
Hello, Commissioners. I have.
You're muted, John.
Sorry. Got you now.
Yes, John, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, I want to just bring up two questions that I raised two or four meetings ago, which are kind of a procedural matter. And that's the release or publication or whatever you want to call it, some kind of a profile on the Planning Commissioners, something so we public can know a little bit about who the, who the Planning Commissioners are. And that's been discussed, but I, and it was sort of discussed again when I brought it up, but, but nothing has happened about it. The other is a question of when will Planning Commission meetings return to in-person meetings? I, I'm, I'm curious. But and then in light of that, I just want to raise another question. Is there any kind of schedule for CPED's relocation to the 3,000 Pacific Building? Is that going to happen? And if so, when is that going to happen? Will Planning Commission meetings be held there or continue at the courthouse complex? Just kind of a lot of process questions I've got. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up, we have Christie White.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Well, I guess it's a process sort of kind of night. I wanted to echo John's comment just now about in-person meetings. I really would look forward to having that happen when it, when we can do that. I think that's a really great thing. I wanted to talk to you this evening about encouraging your continued support for the processes applied in the work of the Planning Commission. I referenced the code and the comprehensive amendments that are and will be before you. You know, as the Planning Commission has extensively and diligently reviewed the shoreline master plan. I mean, it's been amazing the work you've done with it. All the codes and comprehensive plan amendments, you know, particularly those that have been in place for a long tenure, warrant the Planning Commission's, you know, great thoughtful, extensive review and analysis. You know, as defined by the Municipal Research and Services Center, the Planning Commission provides citizen review and recommendations on planning-related matters to the city, town, county council, or Board of Commissioners. In the Thurston Planning Commission rules of procedure, there's options for you all to do subcommittees on topics that may provide for more complete and detailed analysis of complex codes and plan amendments. I mean, it doesn't all have to be the whole group, right? And it might be more efficient and effective. At the very least, you know, the same diligence that's been applied to the shoreline master plan, which didn't necessarily affect everybody in Thurston County. I think that diligence is appropriate for the other code amendments that are before you. So I encourage the Planning Commission to utilize and engage all available options to form and present recommendations that are fully vetted, including various legal opinions, citizen input, and, and looking at what other municipalities are doing on the same or similar topics. You know, by a complete and detailed analysis, we end up with the best case scenario for the citizens of Thurston County versus a scenario that may only provide for ease of commerce. So I think we really need to look at those two sides of the coin. You are the voice of the citizens. As citizens, you know, we have limited resources and we count on your thoughtful and thorough work. So thank you for listening again this evening and doing all that you do. I don't forget that you're volunteers and really appreciate all the time that you do. So thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Is there anybody else from the community that would like to address the Planning Commission at this time? All right, seeing no other hands, I guess we will move on to the next item, which is new business, which is work session for A27 non-conforming code update with staff member Ashley Array.
Can I, can I jump in, interrupt for a minute? We forgot approval of the minutes and I actually had an item on that.
I don't think. Yeah, yeah, let me back that up.
Yeah.
Okay. If everybody's looked at the approval of the minutes, I guess first we will take a vote, all in favor in improving the minutes. I'll, I'll get you Commissioner Wheatley. Do you want to?
Yeah. Before, yeah, I just, yeah, so I, the, the part where it discusses my, that memo that I brought to the meeting last time, instead of like getting into changing the wording or anything, I thought I would ask Commissioners if it'd be okay if we just appended, you know, attached that memo that I wrote to the minutes. So that, you know, that's something that we can ask for anyway, but not retroactively. I mean, I can either ask that it be attached to tonight's minutes, but it'd make more sense to attach it to the minutes from before where it mentions us discussing that memo I wrote about comparing the environment designation system purpose and criteria where I had that kind of side by side. Let me see if I can, you guys, I'm getting blank, blank looks. You know, when we were, when we were talking about, you know, the designations like shoreline residential and natural, and I wrote a memo where I was comparing what the, what the state, I can't remember if it was the RCW or the code said versus what the Thurston County one did. And I was trying to highlight the fact that the shoreline residential designation was, was quite significantly different. And that didn't kind of come out in the minutes. But rather than try to change the minutes, I thought we could just attach that memo that I, that I provided to the Commissioners.
Chris, we, my, my only concern is that we don't, your, your memo was put into the meeting packet, so it is part of the record. And we don't generally add any of the discussion materials to the minutes.
Oh, was it, was it part of the packet? I thought it was.
It was addressed as public comment. It came in under the public comment area.
Oh, did it?
Yeah. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't. Christina, do you remember how that was forwarded to us? It was part of the, part of the last public comment update? Oh, I think we might have lost Christina. It was.
Sorry, just takes me a minute to find all my buttons. It, the information was forwarded to the Planning Commissioners. That information was also put up online, so it is part of the record.
Okay.
It was put up online as, as part of the packet for that day?
It, part of the information that was discussed for that day, yes.
Well, was that, was that memo put in the packet though? Like, is there somewhere that the public has access to the memo that I wrote or did that just go to Commissioners?
No, it is on the Planning Commission's website. Attached as part of the documentation, just like any of the documents that we provided to you during any, for any meeting.
Okay.
Fisher Wheatley, if you'd like to make a motion to amend the, the minutes to include that, you're, you're welcome to make that motion.
Okay, can I do that? Then I, then I'd be a happy camper.
Okay.
Okay, so can I, can I move to append that memo to the minutes? Is it, okay, yeah, okay.
We'll second on that motion. All right, all those in favor of amending the minutes to include Commissioner Wheatley's memo, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
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 Thanks. I was actually trying to save time, so sorry.
That's all right. The, the motion is failed, but I'm glad that your memo is in the record. Thank you.
Eric, I think, you know, it would be appropriate because we did discuss it and it came from a Commissioner that we at least mention it in the minutes.
That there was a memo?
That we discussed, I mean, we, we talk about in the minutes what we discussed and, and we did discuss that specifically. So we just reference it in the minutes and so it's there.
Yeah, and that it's, and reference it in a way that says it's available for people to look at so that.
Like that. In paragraph three there where it says Commissioner Wheatley's memo on the SMP was entered into the record and discussed. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of that motion? Well, I guess, would somebody please make that motion for me, please?
I saw move.
I'll move.
And seconded, all, all those in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll try to be more efficient.
No, that's, I'm kind of learning this, so I'm sorry for going roundabout on it. With that, we will move on to our new business, which is work sessions for item A27, the non-conforming code update. And with that, we have staff Ashley Array.
Hi, well, good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Ashley Rye, and I am excited to be the newest member of the Natural Resources Planning Team here at Thurston County. I moved to Olympia just last year with my husband and two kiddos. And when I'm not working, you'll find me puttering around our little urban farm or outriding horses since me and my daughter have my first horse show coming up, which is a little scary. If you just give me a moment, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And then hopefully you'll be looking at a presentation, a riveting presentation. Let's see here. Do you see a very exciting presentation about a critical areas ordinance update? Awesome. Let's, so I could talk about horses all night. Hopefully some of you would join me, but then I wouldn't get a chance to share our proposed updates to the critical areas ordinance for existing non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. This project was officially docketed by the board in 2020. Development Services staff identified this project as a priority update that would save time and cost for applicants while still ensuring critical areas are adequately protected. Let's start with a brief project overview. I wish I could see, so you could show me with a raise of hands how many people are familiar with reasonable use exceptions. I see Eric, Eric with a raised hand. Hopefully some of you are, but in case you're not, here's just a quick overview. So Chapter 24.50 of the Critical Areas Ordinance applies to any non-conforming use, structure, or lot that was created prior to its adoption on July 24, 2012. If someone wants to expand their user structure or develop their lot, they often have to go through what's called a reasonable use exception process. These applications are reviewed by the Hearings Examiner and can only be granted if no other reasonable alternative method of development is possible. This can be a pretty lengthy cost prohibitive process, especially for smaller scale projects that have minimal, if any, impacts to a critical area buffer. So after working with a number of applicants over the years, Development Services staff has identified some key changes that would streamline the permitting process for these smaller scale projects. Rather than go through the lengthy reasonable use exception process, the smaller projects with minimal impacts would be able to go to through an administrative review. And in the event an applicant's project has too many identified impacts to be addressed in the administrative review, they'll always still have the option to request a reasonable use exception. Any questions with the, with that so far before I jump into what the updates are? Okay, hearing none. So the updates are limited to just two chapters of the Critical Areas Ordinance. We've got Chapter 24.03 Definitions and Chapter 24.50, that, that existing non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. So the proposed code updates will clarify a number of definitions as they relate to the existing non-conforming development chapter. And then the other updates will expand administrative review of small scale projects. And though we're hoping to clarify when buffer mitigation and restoration plans are required, as well as update the surety requirements to match what's already in Chapter 24.70 Surety Agreements and Bonds. This table more specifically identifies what the proposed changes are and what the actual impacts would be on the ground for applicants. So in the left-hand column, you have the proposal, while the right-hand column shows what's in place today. So starting at the top, additions would be allowed on the side of the house opposite the critical area, call that the landward side, as long as applicants can show the buffer no longer provides any environmental function. This is consistent with the Department of Ecology's interpretation of exemptions, which includes activities that will have little or no environmental effect. Right now, additions are limited to existing impervious surfaces like enclosing a concrete patio. Onto the next line, the current code allows new impervious surfaces that are less than 500 square feet in size in the outer 25% of a wetland buffer, as long as there's proper mitigation. The proposed update would allow these new impervious surfaces to be located a minimum of 100 feet from the wetland edge. This change would provide more flexibility for applicants while still protecting the buffer area providing the most critical environmental function. Under the next line, the proposed updates would also clarify what constitutes an alteration, expansion, and replacement. Replacement would be allowed outright with these updates rather than tied to the value of the structure. This is also in keeping with the Department of Ecology's interpretation. Where relocating a structure could actually have more damage than disturbing the part of the buffer, or I'm sorry, more, sorry, more damage to the buffer rather than rebuilding in the same location. And as I mentioned, we're also proposing to update those surety requirements to match what's in Chapter 24.70. Right now, performance bonds are required for all restoration projects associated with existing non-conforming development, while 24.70 only requires them if an applicant requests final inspection before completing the actual restoration. And then finally, the last line, for non-conforming lots, the proposed updates would allow a minimum 100-foot wetland repairing buffer similar to what's being proposed for where new impervious services are allowed. And then I was hoping there'd be questions along the way, but no one interrupted me, so.
Are there any questions? I have, I have questions and comments, believe me.
Good. I'm like, I'm already at the end. Yes, please, Commissioner Wheatley, what, what questions do you have?
Well, I have several. My first question, and you may not, this goes, I mean, this was first docketed in 2020, so it's pretty old. And you're new, so, you know, but maybe somebody will remember, but this, this is targeted specifically, you know, it's not a review of the whole, you know, critical areas thing. It's, it's just about non-conforming, the, the non-conforming stuff. How many cases per year, say, are we talking about for county staff? You know, like, what is the difference? What's the practical difference in terms of, you know, what, what cases of review would be saved from this? You know, like, how much time or, you know, what, what is the savings from doing this for the county in terms of the number of, of applications it looks at?
I wish I had like a specific number for you, but I think what I've heard from the Development Services staff is that in, in the process of talking to potential applicants, a lot of them decide not to go through a reasonable use exception process because it is so time-consuming and costly. The permits cost more than $3,800 just to apply, and there's no guarantee that you're actually going to get an approval. And so it's, I think it's really providing an avenue for people that at this point don't really have an avenue to put that small addition on the back of their house, where Department of Ecology has already said that that buffer is isolated and not providing any, you know, no or very limited environmental function at this point.
But is this like 10, 10 people, five people, 100 people? What are we talking about here?
Probably not 100. I don't, I don't know, but I'd be happy to follow up and ask, and I could get that information to you.
Okay, yeah, because this is a lot of effort for, for this. And if it doesn't benefit that many people, that's some, that's a kind of a contextual thing we need to think about. Okay, and then I, I have some comments, but I particularly have a question about one of the very specific elements of this that is of concern to me, quite a bit of concern. And that's functional isolation, physical separation. That's under 20, 2450, 20D. That's an entirely new, an entirely new paragraph. So it's, it's brand new policy that's being introduced here.
And actually, you'll find very similar language in the wetland section of the Critical Areas Ordinance. So it is a brand new section here, but it really echoes what already exists in another part of the Critical Areas Ordinance. And we did that so that there would be as much consistency as possible.
Okay, yeah, that's where it's a little hard to look at this in isolation. That was one of my comments is, you know, we're looking at this one chunk and we're not seeing how it fits into the larger ordinance. So I'm very, I'm very concerned about that one because I don't, you know, I know that the GM, the, the GMA and and, you know, what I've read, you know, that like the, the hand, the Critical Areas Ordinance handbook that you can find on the Department of Commerce website. They make it very clear that science is paramount. And in, and in fact, there's kind of a quote from the handbook that says, basically, if you're comparing the value, you know, sort of the protective value of the permit process against the protective value of writing the code to, to best available science. The best available science is the most important thing. And so I don't understand this concept of functional isolation and physical separation and the scientific basis of it, and whether it represents best available science. And I'm really concerned about it. And I would, I would like to, to hear about that as we look at this, you know, if we come around and look at this again or prior to the hearing or at the hearing or whatever. But I'm concerned about the, some of the, the, whether the, the assumptions have been vetted sufficiently. So I'm concerned about cumulative impacts and whether that's been considered, you know, so you're, and that goes back to that question we're talking about one or two or 100 or, you know, what are we looking at here? Because there's an issue of potential cumulative impacts that isn't addressed here. And then the other thing is especially about the height of structures. This allows for an increase in the height of structures. And that doesn't really quite fit the concept of. fit the concept of reasonable use exceptions where you're kind of replacing or remodeling something, but you're not substantially changing it. And there's an assumption that height isn't going to have an impact and an environmental impact. But that may or may not be true. It kind of depends on the critical area. So has that been considered? Has, you know, has height been fully vetted for that? Another thing that concerns me is that it looks like a pertinences can now be, you know, it's it's suggested that there wouldn't have to be a review if somebody wants to take an appurtenance and turn it into a a living space. You know, so they they could take a porch and enclose it or a patio area and turn it into a room. And and I'm not, I would like to know if that would be you know, if there's a sound basis for that. I I question whether there is, and another thing that concerns me is that there's a removal of language that says if a if a structure is voluntarily destroyed. I don't have the, I don't remember the exact language, but if it's voluntarily destroyed, it can be replaced.
That
and that's, you know, that's, there's a deletion there that of of the current language that's that's basically says you can't do that.
I think it's stated in the intro paragraph to that, but I will double check because it was, the intention was that 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 would not be the case, so I will double check that, but it should be in the lead in language. And just more of a cleanup of duplication rather than an elimination of that, but no, the voluntary destruction.
Okay, and then, and then I have one last thing and then I'll
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and because this is really important, and that is that it seems to me that these change, some of these change suggested amendments allow for it. It allows for substantial improvements. Their substantial improvements are when the value of the structure is increased by over fifty percent. And under the old language specifically, you couldn't do that. But under the new language, you can do substantial improvement and that concerns me because we're talking, you know, that that isn't really the concept behind this, you know, behind how you deal with nonconforming structures. I don't think it's ness, you know, I think it needs discussion as to whether substantial improvements should be allowed or not. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I had lots to say.
I, I got it all written down.
Thank you. At at this point, staff has asked if we would be willing to set a public hearing for item A twenty seven nonconforming code updates for May fourth, twenty twenty two at seven P M or soon after. Is there anybody that could make that motion?
Go move.
Is there a second? Well, the motion has failed at this particular point. Ashley, if you can bring back those answers or some more information on the questions that have been asked, we'd sure appreciate it. And hopefully at that time, we can set a public hearing for you.
That sounds great. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners. It was great meeting you all.
Thank you very much. And it's now seven oh five. We're running a little bit late today, but I'm about to open up the public hearing. So hopefully we have a bunch of, well, we do have a bunch of community members with us tonight. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. This is a virtual public hearing. Those wishing to testify are today, we are here to hold a public hearing on development code docket item A eight. The Habitat Conservation Plan Implementing Ordinance. This is a virtual public hearing and those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comments or mailed in comments. If you wish to testify, please choose the raise your hand option. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. And the and staff will call your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose star six to mute yourself. If you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect from Zoom and call three six zero nine seven two six seven eight five. I'll go through the rules of public comment when that time comes, but at this point, we have a staff present presentation from Christina Chapeau.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Christina Chapeau, Community Planning Manager for Community Planning and Economic Development Department. I do have a presentation. It will be verbal. I do not have a pretty presentation as Ashley had. So I will get started. This public hearing is to accept public comment on the development code docket item A eight, the Habitat Conservation Plan Implementing Ordinances. In twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, the U S Fish and Wildlife Service has listed several species as threatened or endangered under the Endangered Species Act, the E S A. As discussion with, after discussion with U S Fish and Wildlife and analyzing the extent of listed species habitat overlap with the potential development activities and implementation of potential capital projects, Thurston County considered its options to maintain compliance with the E S A. As a result, the county determined that a programmatic habitat conservation plan would provide the conservation and development guidelines to protect the natural resources while improving and streamlining the permitting process for long term conservation needs. Excuse me, I missed my spot. Guidelines start back, conservation plan would provide conservation and development guidelines to protect the natural resources while improving and streamlining the permitting process for development that affects threatened and endangered species. By proactively addressing the long term conservation needs, the Habitat Conservation Plan strengthens local control over land use and provides greater flexibility in meeting the needs such as housing, transportation and economic growth in the area. With input from the independent science reviewers, stakeholders and the public, a team of scientists and planners developed a habitat conservation plan. Starting in twenty thirteen, staff held several stakeholder meetings to take input from technical advisors, consultants, community stakeholders and the interested public to edit, to identify the covered activities, covered species and quantification tools that are in the habitat conservation plan. Thurston County also worked closely with the Thurston Regional Planning Council, T R P C, and multiple Thurston County departments. This work was to ensure the final product would address the county's forecasted population growth, development and land use needs within the requested term of the incidental take permit. The county has also consulted and received technical assistance and guidance from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. In twenty fifteen, county staff presented the first habitat conservation plan draft to stakeholders. At this time, staff and consultants took input and adjusted the habitat conservation plan before initiating technical review by U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty one, county staff and consultants with guidance from the Board of County Commissioners worked with U S Fish and Wildlife to address issues to ensure the document met the federal permit issuance requirements. The permit area in the Habitat Conservation Plan is approximately four hundred and twelve thousand acres, which covers Thurston County's permitting authority. This includes rural Thurston County and the urban growth areas of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Yelm, Rainier, Tenah, Tenino and Grand Mount. The H C P covers most private and public development that required authorization from Thurston County. The H C P does not cover mineral extraction or mining activities. These activities, should they impact E S A listed species, would need to seek separate federal permits in addition to any local permits required. The species covered under the H C P are three subspecies of the Mazamo pocket gopher. The Yelm pocket gopher, the Tenino pocket gopher, the Olympia pocket gopher, the Taylor checker spot butterfly, the Oregon vesper sparrow and the Oregon spotted frog. Thurston County has finalized the Thurston County Habitat Conservation Plan, which has been reviewed and is awaiting U S Fish and Wildlife final action. To implement the Thurston H C P, the county must amend its development codes to require future development projects to comply with Thurston H C P. The proposed amendments would impact title seventeen and title twenty four of the Thurston County Code. Specifically to amend title seventeen to add chapter seventeen forty Habitat Conservation Plan Implementing Ordinance. Amend the chapter seventeen, section seventeen twenty point one four zero and amend chapters twenty four point oh one, twenty four point oh three and twenty four point two five of the Thurston County Code. Chapter seventeen forty adopts the H C P establishes and sets application process required and pro requires projects to be considered conditioned consistent with the H C P and defines applicability. The chapter also describes and reviews processes, development standards, required mitigation methods provided for in the H C P. This process includes without limitations the following. Staff will identify projects within covered species mapped extent aerial, using aerial maps and cover my backup. Staff will identify projects within the covered species map extent areas using aerial maps in soil layers instead of species surveys. The applicant may choose to complete a site specific soil survey rather than relying on U S D A soils map series. And the applicant must submit information regarding Oregon spotted frog and wetland information should there be wetlands on their property. Applicants will work with the county to implement best management practices to avoid and minimize impacts to the minute maximum extent practical. And Thurston County will work with the applicants to determine the mitigation to offset the impacts. The new ordinance also describes options for their mitigation fee, which is a mitigation fee, dedication of land or purchase of credits from a you, from an independent U S Fish and Wildlife approved conservation bank. Additionally, the ordinance references department standard mechanisms for appeal of decision and enforcement. Projects approved under the H C P implementing ordinance will receive incidental tape coverage through the county's incidental take permit and will allow the applicant to proceed with their covered activity without having to get a federal permit. Staff also proposes several targeted changes to amend title twenty four to avoid duplication and confusion when implementing the H C P through the new ordinance. Specifically, these changes are found through subchapters in title twenty four, including twenty four oh one of the general provisions, twenty four oh three definitions to add several definitions and to clarify the definition of the department. And to fix a clerical error and add reference to the Habitat Conservation Plan Implementing Ordinance. During the development of the Thurston Habitat Conservation Plan, county developed a conservation program to meet the biological goals and conservation objectives of each of the species covered in the Thurston H C P. Central to the conservation program are mitigation measures to build the Thurston County Conservation Land System, expanding the existing network of protected lands managed for covered species and their habitat. Staff research noted much overlap in the county's designated mineral lands overlay and several of the covered species habitats. To ensure properties selected and engaged in the conservation land system are perpetually protected as required by the federal regulations. Staff proposes an amendment to section seventeen point two zero point one four zero. The amendment would prohibit mineral extraction on lands conserved to protect species habitat covered by the H C P. The proposed amendment is limited in scope where conservation easements are explicitly established for the mitigation under Thurston County H C P, and that would be established between the county and the willing landowner. The Planning Commission previously reviewed this item on January nineteenth, February second and March second of twenty twenty two, and on March second, scheduled a public hearing to accept testimony on the proposed code options being considered. Written notification of the public hearing was published in the Olympian on March fifteenth. And in addition, web mail was sent to the Community Planning Division's emailless serve on March twenty eighth and March thirtieth. A press release was also issued on March twenty eighth. Community planning website was updated with all available documents prior to the hearing being noticed. To date, thirteen public comments have been received in writing and these have been summarized in the comments comment matrix provided to the Planning Commission this afternoon. Thank you, Planning Commission. That concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Christina. At this time, we will take public comments. I want to go through a few rules first and and just make sure everybody understands that this public comment is going to be limited specifically to the implementing ordinance of the Thurston County Habitat Conservation Plan. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I will call out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please unmute yourself and you may turn on your camera if you choose. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And we now have a Polly to review the timer so everybody can see how that works. Polly?
Hi, yes, the timer will start with the green light and that will go until two minutes, thirty seconds. And then it will turn yellow until three minutes and then it turns red and that means your time is up.
Thank you. First up tonight, we have Elizabeth Rodrick. Go ahead.
Hello, hi, I'm Elizabeth Rodrick. I'm Vice President of our Black Hills Audubon Society. We represent over thirteen hundred members in Thurston, Mason and Lewis Counties. And we're an all volunteer nonprofit organization. Just wanted to say good evening to everyone. I have three specific comments. The first has to do with the appeals. This is under the code seventeen point four zero point one two oh. Appeals of administrative decisions must be made within fourteen calendar days. I'm wondering how the public will be informed of these administrative decisions. For example, the approval of an H C P application by a landowner and there needs to be a way to track these applications so we can, if we have an interest in appealing, we can make sure to be able to do it within the two week deadline. My second comment is regarding enforcement violations of this title are through the county Enforcement Code Title twenty six, and it appears that all violations of the Thurston County Code are a misdemeanor. Also, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development has the authority to issue civil infractions with a monetary penalty. The penalties are set by state law and the maximum for a misdemeanor is ninety days in jail and a thousand dollar fine. The maximum for a class two civil infraction appears to be a hundred and twenty five dollars a day for up to thirty days. That's about three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. We stipulate that if a violation involves the taking of an endangered species, there should be a higher penalty. And it should be consistent with state law Title seventy seven for the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, where the taking of an endangered species is a gross misdemeanor, which carries a penalty of three hundred and six, a maximum penalty of three hundred sixty four days or a five thousand dollar fine. And I've I've written this all out. The last comment is on attachment C. The addition about mineral extraction and asphalt production related to conservation easements. We would suggest that you add reserves and preserves as well as conservation easements because many of the reserves that have already been established may not have been acquired with mineral rights and so conceivably mining could occur in those. The second addition is that mineral extraction also be prohibited in the wetland riparian areas. Buffers and aquifers that supply water to the Oregon spotted frog conservation easements and Buffers and aquifers that supply water to the Oregon spotted frog conservation easements and reserves and the reason for this is that the water sources sustain the that very sensitive hydrologic conditions that the frog requires to survive and
Wrap it up, please, Elizabeth.
That's it. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Next up, we have Charlotte Persons. Charlotte, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you.
All right, um, just a second. Okay, I'm Charlotte Persons from Northeast Olympia. I wrote an article for the January issue of Works in Progress newspaper that explains that developers, farmers and environmentalists all rejoice over the HCP. And generally, the implementing regulations are also excellent with some exceptions just explained by Elizabeth Roderick. But I want to speak a word of caution. It is encouraging that the HCP takes a landscape level approach to the survival of the Mozama Pocket Gopher, the Vesper Sparrow and Taylor's Checkers Butterfly. We residents of Thurston County are lucky that some small remnants of our native prairie survive in healthy enough condition to support these three protective species. However, reading the recovery plans for each of these three species brings home one overall lesson. Maintaining mitigation lands that will keep the few remaining members of these populations alive will be a complex task. All three protected species need large areas of land and all three need existing populations to be already breeding on that land or immediately adjacent to it. Recovery efforts will remain continuous removal of non-native plants. Reintroduction of native plant grasses and trees and careful use of fire to keep the prairies open. Also, each species requires its own particular type of prairie habitat. For example, the butterfly needs short native grasses and particular host plants such as English planting. On the other hand, the Vesper Sparrow requires short shrubs and a variety of grass heights. As the HC P rolls out and the three species current prairie is developed. Maintaining mitigation lands over thirty years is the only hope for these species survival. However, the only way their complex habitat requirements exist in the implementing regulations is through reference to the HCP. The final version of that document is expected in fall. I hope it reflects the complexity of preserving mitigations lands so that they are healthy for all these protected species. I want our grandchildren to thank us for being good stewards of our prairies and the iconic species that live on them.
Thank you, Charlotte. Up next, we have Derek Vedder. Derek, you're still muted.
Okay, hi, my name is Derek Vedder and I have been a landowner just a little bit north of Rochester since twenty seventeen. I bought a five acre tract in the middle of a set of other five acre tracts were all developed previously. When I bought my property, it had been eaten down significantly by horses. There were no pocket overs on the property. And so I thought that I was in good shape. However, the following summer. Once the the land had had a chance to follow and some of the grasses started growing back, the gophers came back. And I think this this was a really good demonstration of what is wrong with the current HCP or sorry mitigation process that we follow. Right now, we only look at properties that have a current population. However, they were listed, the Mozama Pocket was listed based on remaining available habitat. And so currently, if you have remaining available habitat, but it does not have any Mozama Pocket overs, you don't have to mitigate anything. If you do have pocket overs and you can get through the mitigation process, all they require you to do is to satisfy a portion of your property. However, in order to have a sustainable population of Mozama Pocket overs, you need to have a fairly large piece of property. That's stuff that just does not happen with the current mitigation process. What the the new process will allow is it will allow for a large, well maintained habitat that can actually sustain populations. And it will also give smaller landowners like myself a way to be able to develop our property. But while still maintaining a good chunk of that property for a good habitat. The reason why the the gophers thrive on on areas like mine is because they're all five acre properties. There's only one to five. And so therefore, since we're only building on a portion of the property, the remaining backup of the property is all open for to tie into the neighboring properties as well. And so that that allows for the population to be sustained even though it's not a single large piece of property. You know, but at the same time, my property was not good habitat when I bought it. It's now getting back to where it can be good habitat. And what this this new method of mitigation will allow is for much larger pieces of property to be maintained in a better shape going forward in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Up next, we have Phyllis Farrell.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Phyllis Farrell. I live in the Sunwood Lakes area of Incorporated Thurston County. Thank you for all your work on this project. I know it's been a Herculean effort. Thank you, Christina, for all your work and your patience in answering some of my questions. I'll be brief tonight. Only have a couple of comments. I'm concerned about the wording of mitigation quote to the maximum extent practical. That seems to me pretty subjective and if there is a negative impact to ESA species, that should not be allowed. To avoid deaths by a thousand cuts, full mitigation should be required and guaranteed. A second issue that was mentioned earlier, I think Elizabeth mentioned about the appeals process or procedures of fourteen days. I guess what's going to be critical for the public on that is how are they going to access this information? And the particulars about the permit that they might be concerned about. So I would suggest some additional work on that appeal section. And the last thing I would also, this was mentioned, I think, earlier as well. Stronger enforcement provisions. These are ESA, you know, species and you know, if we are going to provide the necessary effort and to protect them, enforcement needs to be rigorous and predictable and stringent. Right now, I think people recognize they're willing to take the punishment in order to go ahead and do what they want. So I would suggest stronger enforcement provisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the planning commission on this issue? Kristy White. You're up.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm back. Um, I just wanted to echo the comments regarding the mineral lands and no extraction with that overlay when you have an HCP overlay. I mean, my previous comments in the past about the Pepto Bismol pink swath of of the entire county now being available for extraction. I think if we can add, you know, some acreage and protection, that's a good thing. The other thing is the two week, you know, fourteen days, as I said earlier about process. Fourteen days is really a short time period and and I would encourage that time to be lengthened to be able to, you know, make make comment about that. So and again, the enforcement as well. It is an endangered species misdemeanor seems a little light. Maybe there's something in between, but definitely strengthen that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Is there anybody else that would like to address the planning commission? Seeing nobody else wanting to make comment. This public hearing is now closed and we can work into our work session with Christina Chapeau.
All right, so we have taken public comment and you have seen the recommended proposals several times now. I guess, is there any discussion by the planning commission at this time? Or you ready to make a recommendation? At this point, this is a work session for the planning commission to move to the next step, which would be a recommendation.
Christina, would you be able to explain to us on that particular fourteen days to reply thing? Are there legal limitations from the state or somewhere else in code that would prevent us from extending that out more than fourteen days?
So I did pull that information from our standard permitting processes. If the planning commission wanted to make changes to that particular process, it would be outside the normal appeal period that is an administrative permit decision, which is a staff issued permit. So this would be if the planning commission went that direction, this would be an outlier from the normal process.
Okay, Commissioner Carmen, did you have something?
Yes, just to finish up on that specific question. How in those fourteen days, how is the public notified?
That we don't do, there aren't requirements for the public to be notified for all of our permits that would take too much time on our part. At this point in time, Development Services has a property owners can or the public can ask about certain projects, but we don't have information up on websites about applications that have been received. We're moving towards a more transparent permitting system that the public can see public can access. However, at this point in time. The public would actually have to come in and ask about a specific property.
So it's so it's nothing different than happens on any other appeal. For for any other purpose or whatever, you know, when the when the developer appeals something or the homeowner, I mean, someone could be a homeowner is doing this. Cost them a lot of money. Okay, the second point is of course, we got all a lot of written comments tonight just before the meeting. And there seemed to be a quickly scanned through a few of them. And I saw that the Olympia Master Builders had sent in some information and whatnot. I I wouldn't be ready to make a recommendation tonight until I had a chance to look over those things until perhaps we had some more answers to the question. There were some very good questions brought up tonight, too. That I would like to know the answers to. So.
Thank you, Doug.
I agree with that.
Christina, could you tell us a little bit more about how our timelines for finishing up this implementation is and how that react or how that interacts with what is happening with the other agencies involved?
Sure. So what I can provide is that county has finalized the Habitat Conservation Plan and a provided a final EIS to US Fish and Wildlife. There is proposed publication of the final environmental impact statement, which is the environmental review of the Habitat Conservation Plan itself. Proposed for early May. There will be then a thirty day period in which the federal government cannot make a cannot take action on a decision on the HCP. Which puts us into early June for a potential incidental take permit issuance. It's timeline that we have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, thank you. I echo what Doug just said. I'd like to get some of those questions answered, but one of the things that I saw in all the comments that were provided about an hour before we started this session was some information about fees. I mean, the cost of those fees seem to be really exorbitant for an individual property owner trying to build a home. Can you verify that that information is was correct or is it misguided or what, Christina?
I would have to go back and look at that particular comment and bring you information back.
Well, there were a couple of comments about cost. And as you know, that that wasn't included in the HCP information. It's probably the the fee, the application fee, et cetera, that's done there when they submit their application. But it would be nice to know what those fees are. Because for individual property owners to pay upwards of three thousand dollars or nineteen thousand dollars for their property, that seems outrageously high. I don't think that's where it's at. But even three thousand dollars added on top of permit fees already in Thurston County, which are high. Doesn't seem reasonable either. So I'd just like to know what those permit fees are.
Right, so nineteen thousand dollars would mean they are impacting a very large area. Impact the mitigation fees are based on the size of the area and the quality of the habitat being impacted. And I can bring back examples of what the calculation tool looks like with a couple of examples.
That would be great. Thank you.
We have any other commissioners that like to ask questions during this work session? All right, hearing no more questions. Would anybody care to offer any motions? It does not look like there is. Is there? I think we're going to have to need to have another work session on this. Is there anybody that would like to ask any more pointed questions of Christina to be able to bring back to us at the next time we we review this? Oh, Kevin, Kevin, let's hear from Kevin. We haven't heard from him tonight.
I just wanted to also agree with Doug and maybe it's not new, but reaffirm that all of the questions that were raised by the people who made verbal public comments and they were all relevant questions, I thought, and I think there was about six or seven or maybe eight or more raised. I would like answers on all eight of those if possible.
Thank you, Kevin. Doug, would you like to add some more?
Yes, um, the you know, one of the questions here tonight or a comment testimony was on enforcement and whatnot and and I I found it interesting that in a discussion I had with the Olympia Master Builder that they're also concerned about enforcement. And it's they feel it's a little gray. And and they would actually recommend that this doc, the implementation document be reviewed by a private municipal attorney. Because they think there's going to be problems with it because with the enforcement, that it's not, it's not tied down quite tight enough. And so looking at their their concerns and whatnot, I would want to to see that in addition to the answers to the questions that were raised tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Weeley?
Yeah, I want to make sure that, you know, a lot of these were sort of hard issues, hard questions, but Charlotte Persons raised a point about complexity. And I'm wondering if there's a way, I appreciate that the, you know, the that we had talked about some changes to the purpose section and those changes were incorporated. I'm wondering if maybe there's a place in the in the purpose, it's, you know, section seventeen point four oh point oh one five to maybe bring in that that discussion about complexity. You know, could could we just look at that and see if there's some way that 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 notion could be captured?
All right, thank you. Any other comments from any of the other commissioners? All right, Christina, is there anything that you would like clarification on?
No, I have the basic information that was presented by the public comments today. I'll bring back some information regarding a number of those areas and information regarding a number of those areas and we'll have more conversations next time we meet.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next work, work session, which is the wireless code update with Caitlin Nelson.
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners. I'm going to be summarizing a few of the changes in the draft code. You should have received a copy of the most updated draft code with annotations from staff, including some explanations of where some of the proposed changes are coming from. This draft does have a handful of changes from the last version, which were shown in track changes and annotated. Before I continue, as we update this draft code and you receive changes for following work sessions, can I ask who would like to receive a physical copy of the draft code? Before the meetings, because it's a little larger of a document and otherwise we would just send it digitally. Joel and Jim.
Okay.
Oh, and Commissioner Wheatley as well.
And Doug Carmen.
Most, okay. Okay. Also, just as a note, these PowerPoints will be on the county website after this meeting. They're not currently.
Caitlin, I was trying to find my raise your hand and I couldn't find it, so I'll just ask it. I think to make this a little bit shorter, I think you can delete the old code, which is 15 pages long because it's totally eradicated.
Yeah. This is a, this is a bill format, so it will be the official code draft, but for these purposes, I'll shorten it next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Feldman and Colleen McCroskey are also, can, are, are legal consultants are also here to answer questions and have some examples of wireless facilities to show you after I've gone through my PowerPoint. At the last work session, there were some questions about the stakeholder committee, community memo that was provided to you. You wanted to know more about what was in it and what was, what the different participants felt about different items that were mentioned. It needs to be noted that the concerns from stakeholders were reviewed and discussed by staff and the legal team. And if it hasn't been addressed as an option to consider as we're updating this, then it hasn't been consistent with the recommendations from the legal team. These concerns will still go to the Board of County Commissioners with their review of this draft, but the initial scope of this update that was provided to us by the Board of County Commissioners was to make this code update consistent with federal law. So that's where our sideboards are at the moment. And we will continue to discuss what we can make changes on, but we can't get into the details of anything that would be of a legal concern at this time. I'm going to share my screen for a short PowerPoint. There are quite a few changes to definitions. They were updated to be consistent with the FCC where necessary. And some definitions had more room for discretion. Some definitions were also removed because the terms were no longer used in our code. Or were just incorporated into other definitions. Changes in this version of the draft include a few items. One of them being the use table in the special use section of the code. It mistakenly left out some of the zones and the key for the table. It also now clarifies that colocations would be an administrative special use, not a hearing examiner, which is shown in other areas of the draft code. So that's not new. It would just wasn't shown correctly in the table. In the current code, it could be one or the other, either administrative or a hearing examiner, depending on how significant the changes are. But now the more insignificant changes sort of fall underneath what would be an eligible facilities request. And the reason that it's changing to administrative instead of hearing examiner is because of the change in timing that the county must review and make decisions before a permit is automatically approved. Also called the shot clocks. The process for a hearing examiner wouldn't provide enough time for that review and the decision for the county. So there's, there's really no way for us to, to make it a hearing examiner approval. A question was brought up at the last meeting regarding whether or not we could create a different permit process for review. The answer is ultimately no, not through this review, so we don't have much wiggle room there. You also see small wireless facilities mentioned throughout this draft that aren't mentioned in the existing code. It's a new term, so it's been included as a, in the code as a specific facility type. They're generally commonly placed in the right of way and our current draft requires an administrative special use for it. The draft also includes clarification to process requirements like outlining what is needed with application submittals, specific information around things like shot clocks and appeals and updates to the language around design standards for application approvals. And a lot of what was removed from the code is considered outdated, either because it became redundant or the county can no longer regulate it, like requiring that there be a gap in coverage of a network before allowing new facilities in certain areas. Or increasing radio frequency limits, which are set by the FCC. Because it's a repeal and replace, it's, and a lot of it is updating the language for readability and for legal purposes. It's not easy to, to compare exactly what's changing, so definitely if you have any specific questions about some of the drafts, we can always address those and whether or not it's a legal concern or if it's something that we can do something about. Some other questions that were asked the last meeting were like whether or not we could address privacy concerns, types of technology, and whether or not we could create a different permit process. Unfortunately, the answer to all of those is no, that this isn't something that we could consider at this time in this draft. Either because of legal reasons or just because that, that's not how we can that, that's not within the scope of, of this project at the county. We can talk more about how to prioritize different types of applications, which zones they make the most sense in, some design, some readability. And I'll be bringing some of those options for those types of code changes and examples at the next work session. It was also requested at the last work session that we provide some examples of some of the types of facilities that we're regulating in this draft. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that Ken Feldman can share his and show you some examples of those.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Can you see this from my screen? Can you see a PowerPoint presentation? Okay. So I under, we understood that at your last meeting, you basically said, what, what do some of these things look like? So this is also going to be pretty short. But I wanted to give you examples of at least what I consider to be some, some good looking sites, some bad looking sites. And I, I structured this to give you examples of attachments to structures in one category, some bad sites and some good sites. Towers, some bad sites and some good sites, and then small cells, which are the kind of things that you'll be seeing in the right of way. So what we have here, and, and I tried to provide a location where I knew of one. But there are a variety of different kinds of structures that you can attach wireless sites to the Tarzana, California site. This is an eight foot long antenna that's just sticking off the side of a building. Does not look very nice. Probably no comment required for that water tank with the crown on top. And then this is a parking structure here that you see in Long Beach, California on the bottom right. These are my not so good looking sites, other kinds of attachments. Two water tanks, the one on the right is in Tom Water. The one on the left is in my hometown of Arvada, Colorado. You, if you look closely right down here, these, these black things right at the base of the water tank are wireless antennas. And then they have wiring going down the side of the pole. And as you can see, it's in a multifamily residential neighborhood. This is actually an iconic historical site, this water tank. And there was great debate as to whether to even use it for wireless, but they did a pretty good job. The one from Oxnard is a, a commercial shopping center. Up around the top here is where we've got antennas painted the same color of this tower. And then my favorite site is this highway art in Northern Colorado, right near the Wyoming border of a Buffalo. And if you look really closely, these things that here are antennas on the, built into the side of the, the public art that provides wireless service along an interstate highway. Tower sites, the top two, I mean, we all know what towers look like, so we have our standalone monopoles. The one on the lower right from, from Henderson is a billboard that grew up to be a tower. Also not the nicest looking thing. And then the, you know, I wanted to put this fake tree here, this lousy looking fake tree. There are good ones and there are really bad ones. And the, the one here, I, I've heard many, a, a planning commissioner and council member or commissioner or staff member in multiple communities say, we will never allow a fake tree in our community. And the reason is because of sites like this. They don't always have to look like this. Some better looking towers. The one in the middle there is what a, a fake tree could look like if it's done correctly. I like the one on the upper right because it's kind of creative. That is actually a tower on a church property in Phoenix. And the church worked with the wireless company to kind of create some marketing here right up on top of the tower. And each of the three sides of the antenna right here, there's a, a cross which kind of advertise what we do here. And then, and then this one also, you might have to look at it closely. This is the Santa Fe Country Club in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And this is the screening at the driving range. This gray pole on the left, right at the top here, has a bunch of wireless antennas. And here's your ground equipment on the bottom. So in a fairly nice community and a fairly nice golf course, we have a tower that most people really wouldn't know it was a tower unless they looked at it carefully. Small cells, we we haven't, you know, to me, I think you've heard some of this in some of the early communications. You can hang a lot of stuff on the poles and they still qualify as small cells. And if we don't find a way to conceal them, they can look pretty ugly, especially when you start putting multiple sites up in streets. So I, I don't know exactly where in California, but this one on the upper left is from California. The one on the right is one of the worst I've ever seen. It's from Oakland. And then the one on the, in the center is along an interstate highway south of Denver. Also not something many people would consider small or sightly. But you can design these things to look a lot nicer. And let's see, there we go. Back to Santa Fe, this is at the Santa Fe Opera. If any of you have been down to Santa Fe, it's a great facility. But this is a light pole with small cells built into it, very well designed. The one in the center here is in Colorado Springs, right near the Cheyenne Mountain Resort and the zoo in Colorado Springs. I think this is a T-Mobile pole where they've got the small cells in here at the top of the light pole. And the picture on the bottom, here's the, the bottom part of the pole. And the, the, the rest of the equipment is buried underground along the street here. So you don't have big bulk, bulky material at the base of the pole. Then the one on the right is a Seattle City Light work in progress where they were taking an existing street light over here. Eventually was going to come down and it was being replaced by this pole in the back that will have the street light head here. And again, the circular canister on top where the small cell facility would go. So that's, that's what we got. There were literally hundreds and hundreds of photos I could have choose, chosen from to share with you. But in the interest of being brief, I thought we would start with that. And if anyone is interested in more variety at an upcoming meeting or even in between meetings, we can provide that for you.
And like I said, at the next work session, I had planned on bringing back some code options. But for now, I wanted to check in and see if anybody has any questions on either the document that you were provided with the staff annotations or anything that we've given you tonight.
Commissioner Carmen.
I assume the next work session you'll bring, how would you write into the code control of aesthetics? Is that correct? I mean, there are some good things in those photos and there were some really bad stuff in the photos. And we don't want to have the bad stuff. We want the good stuff. So hopefully in the code, we'll, we'll have a way to control that. And the second thing is there seemed to be a lot of public testimony on the, the frequency and the, whatever's coming off of those towers being damaging to people. And I personally don't have any information on whether, whether it is or it isn't or whether there is a potential for the tower to get out of control and put out too much and then be a hazard. Because we can't require them to test them, but I don't know that there's a need for testing if, if there's not an issue. But there seems to be because public testimony keeps saying there is.
Doug, do you want to address these one at a time or? Or Mr. Feldman, do you want to address Doug's questions at this time?
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to take these one at a time. I, I see Kate smiling, so she's probably glad I'm going to weigh in on the radio frequency question.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and I'll jump in if I need to.
Okay, so I, on the last question first, Commissioner Carmen. Yeah, we've, we've talked about in the past how local governments are preempted by federal law from, from regulating in, in this regard. And, and admittedly, there is, you can read studies that say it's not dangerous at all. You can read studies that say it's definitely dangerous. And you can read some reports from some fairly well qualified experts who say, we don't know enough about it yet and it requires further study. None of that changes the fact that as local governments, we don't have the authority to demand of wireless companies or applicants for these sites more than what the FCC requires, which is the federal agency with jurisdiction here. So it, we can require that they demonstrate that they are, that a site as planned is going to be in compliance with federal standards. We get anything more than that, we get into a gray area. I have seen some communities that do require testing when the initial projected radio frequencies are going to be, say, in the 85 to 100% of the maximum allowable range from the FCC to make sure that they in fact are not going over that limit. And as again, I think we've talked about before, if the county felt like it didn't want to take the legal risk of being challenged for going too far, it could certainly do its own testing and incur the cost of that as a kind of a due diligence to demonstrate to the citizens that this site is safe. So, or I shouldn't even say safe, I should say compliant with federal regulations. So, so I, I think what you will find in the language of the code is that we take it as far as we can go in accordance with federal law without running the, running the risk of losing a lawsuit. And again, if the Board of County Commissioners from a policy standpoint want to take a risk of maybe going a little bit further than that and seeing if the county would get sued or not. You know, we can certainly work with them to add some additional provisions. But what, what is going to be presented to this commission is what we are recommending is as far as we can go and still be safe from losing lawsuits.
What about the issue on how we can differentiate attractive sites versus ugly ones?
Right, so I, I think you're going to see language in the code. And we can talk about the specific language. We can start to dig into it tonight if you'd like, or Kate may want to wait until we actually are, are looking at, you know, this thing holistically at the, at the next meeting. But there will be some language in the code that allows, that, that creates design standards. design standards that requires blending in, that requires painting, that makes it easier actually to get approval and faster to get approval for sites where there are concealed and camouflaged and co-located sites versus more difficult public hearings for standalone towers and things that, you know, that just naturally look uglier than some of those other sites that you saw. And we have also recommended that there be a provision for additional design standards to be adopted by staff over time, in large part because this technology, especially on the small cells, the, the facilities that are going to be in the streets. The, the manufacturing, what, what they are able to do today is even more creative than what we were seeing when these things first came out in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And to the extent that staff has the authority to adopt administrative regulations to change with the times and to address new kinds of designs as they come forward will save the county from going through an extended process. Kind of the, the way this process has been for amending the code, any, as you know, anytime you amend the code, we go through this kind of a process, planning commission, board of county commissioners. And for some of these things, it might be more effective for the county to be able to change on the fly as things change and not go through the process. Now, there's a balancing test there and you may recall some of the concerns that you heard from the public, either in their testimony at prior meetings or in some of the written documents suggested, well, that won't be as transparent to the public if staff is making changes to the rules. I, I understand that. I don't think that has to be the case. I think even when staff adopts administrative rules, you can have a process for providing notice to the public and giving the public an opportunity to weigh in on those. But it, it does create a much more streamlined and quicker process for staff to adapt its design standards as things change in the marketplace.
Thank you. Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah, Caitlin, is there a place that you can put actual picture examples of the types of towers, right of way, small cell, et cetera, in the document as a visual example of what would be acceptable standards as well as the written aspect that Ken just mentioned?
We can definitely consider that more. There are jurisdictions that that will include examples with pictures. So yeah, let us take a look at it and see if anything would fit well in our code.
Because I, I think that would be a visual, because sometimes the written word, when you talk about trying to define in written word, what you're looking for, and particularly with the public, not with the telecommunications folks. They already know what they're looking for and they already have an idea. But if the public could see what an example of what we're going to allow is in the document, I think it would go a lot further for everybody to be accepted, to accept this. Because there are a lot of people that do not want them in the right of way, do not want them in their neighborhoods, do not want them hanging on public buildings, et cetera. We all know that it's going to happen, but we need to better communicate to the public that we're trying very hard to make it aesthetically pleasurable. Whether we can do anything about the, the waves and if that has anything to do with it, there's nothing we can do about that right there. So I think examples, pictures in the document would be very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if there is something that we can do about people's concerns about exposure. And, you know, it's especially, I think, the small cell stuff coming into neighborhoods that, that currently seems to concern a lot of people and with good reason. Is there, I think a question that had been raised earlier was, is there a way to put in some, something about prioritization? And I'm thinking, for example, about, you know, say, you live in a neighborhood and they decide that there, you know, you happen to have a a street light outside your, your home, you know, on the, on the street. And it's a good place to locate one of these. But you have a second floor and you're concerned, you know, your kids live in the second floor, whatever, you know. Is there a way to build in language that prioritizes the sighting? I think this question was raised and I don't know that we got a clear answer on this. So that you can say, well, if you have a choice, you know, put it at the end of the street where there isn't a second floor window close by or something like that. So, so is prioritization like that possible? And then on the, the real quick second question. So get rid of, you know, the recommendation here is just get rid of special use permits across the board. There's no time for the hearing examiner process. And I heard hints there that there might be some way to, to make up for that and have some kind of a process of review. What are other jurisdictions doing to try to make sure that, that people feel comfortable that they're that they're able to get some kind of review if they want it?
Well. On that, on your second question, I am. I am not sure that there's a whole lot that I can think of that other jurisdictions are doing. Everyone is, is dealing with this, these shot clocks and limited periods of time. Most of the jurisdictions, I hesitate to say all, I mean, and, and we work with a lot of communities in multiple states. But that, you know, our, our experience is not necessarily automatically reflective of what's happening all over the country. I can just tell you based upon my experience and from talking to my colleagues who do the same kind of work in throughout the country. Most of these sites, and especially the small cell sites, there are no public hearings. What, what some communities have done is to create more transparency by having a website. And, and the web, they'll have a small wireless facilities page. And they will have maps that show here's where all the existing sites are. And then they'll have different colors to indicate here's where there are pending applications for new sites. They can have requirements for notifying people within five hundred feet of, you know, property owners within five hundred feet of a proposed site. And a, a place for people, if they want to write to staff to get their comments in. In some cases, staff will have some discretion. In some cases, staff won't have a lot of discretion. But the, the things that I see communities doing to try to be as transparent as possible for the public is to make this information available with as much time in advance as they can. But I do not see many communities, I probably couldn't point to one. If you asked me to name one, I could not name one, that allows for public hearings for small wireless facilities in the streets. To your other point about priorities, and I just, I'm pulling up a copy of the the document, I think we have language in, in there now. And if not, I know we have language in some of the examples of the administratively approved design standards that we have seen in lots of other communities and in the individual license agreements that these companies have to sign when they get permission to use the rights of way that basically provide priority to. What's the word I'm looking for? Arterial or arterial streets first, collector street second, residential streets third. So keep them on the busier, more heavily trafficked streets. Then once you are in the neighborhood, if you are going to cite it in a neighborhood to limit the number of standalone poles that you can put on, on, on a residential street. That won't necessarily address the RF issue if you have street facilities on street lights. But that when you do cite facilities in residential neighborhoods that you put them within a certain number of feet from the lot line. So they are not directly in front of the home. So you won't have that example that you mentioned where you may have an antenna that is sort of at the same level as the bedroom window on the second floor of a, of a residence. So there are things that can be put either into the code or into administratively adopted design standards that can address those kinds of citing priorities.
Thank you. Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you. A couple of questions for Ken and a question for staff. First one is right in the same vein as what you just said. That's what I wanted to ask about. I think the public, you know, as much as we're looking at the beauty of different options here, I think the public comments have more centered around how they feel. I'll, I'll remove the word safety since there's differing opinions about that and just say, next to nobody wants to have one of these right next to where they sleep. It's proximity is really the issue. And, you know, the size and wattage and all of those things are also a factor. The cumulative effects of multiple towers in nearby proximity is also a consideration. But really, just nobody wants to have one of these next to their bedroom window. And it seems, so, so I guess I'm really in support of what you just said, which is both prioritization within a prioritization grid to address that as well as actual code. Any code that we can write to require certain amount of distance from people's bedroom windows, to me, would be a huge positive and address major community concerns. The second thing I wanted to mention, follow up on was about the talk about lawsuits and losing lawsuits. Can you confirm, Ken, that if we were to lose a lawsuit, that A, we would not be facing any fines or penalties? B, we would not be paying the other side's attorney costs? The only outcome would be that we would then have to allow that facility to proceed? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. On, on the the, the fines and penalties, I'm not aware of any communities that have had to pay fines or penalties. I am aware of some communities that courts have awarded attorney's fees for the plaintiffs if they felt like there were clear cut violations of the law that, you know, just they should have known better. And it was an egregious kind of a case. So I do think whether it was in state or federal court, the courts would have the authority to award attorney's fees if they deemed it appropriate. I highly unlikely, I think, that there would be any kind of fines or damages. But again, these things are fact specific. There is not a bunch of case law out there that demonstrates that that happens, though.
That's helpful. We'll try to avoid the egregious and frivolous. Thank you. So for staff, there had been conversation about the, the possibility of a second public hearing on this. And the phrase I think that I heard from staff was that that is usually warranted if there's been a significant amount of changes. And I'm just wondering if it's already planned, I see a huge amount of edits in this document I'm reviewing. I'm wondering if that's considered already a significant amount of changes and we're already planning on having this, an additional public hearing on this? Or if that's going to be something we get to after we continue through more work sessions on this?
I'm not sure that I would consider them a significant amount of changes, just because the mistake in the table does not change what was allowed in other areas of the code. There are other sections that were added just to show that the terms are outdated and have been removed. So I don't believe that there has been much added to this draft, but that could also be a further discussion. This is still ongoing. There are still edits that are being made to this. So it could end up being significant enough.
And is that subjective to us and our, our view as a planning commissioner? Or is that up to staff to decide?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I want to say that it's a combination. If somebody wants to correct me, they're welcome to.
I guess, I guess I think we still need to make changes and I guess I think the public wants, and I think there would be a strong rationale for, for having an additional public hearing. So that's my recommendation.
Christina, can you clear up on whether or not we could ask or require another public hearing?
So the planning commission can ask for another public hearing. Staff will review the, once all the changes have been made with our attorney's office. If those changes are substantive, typically that's what we're looking for when we open up a, a public hearing again. Is have there been significant substantive changes? So I think at this point, it's a little early to make any decision. We'll continue to track all of this and circle back at this question.
And, and also remember that it will, there will be a public hearing for the Board of County Commissioners either way.
Thank you. Kevin, do you have any more?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this particular topic for Mr. Feldman or Caitlin? All right. Thank you, guys. We are going to move on to number nine on continued business, which is a work session on Shoreline Master Program with Andrew DePhobus.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew DePhobus, interim senior planner with, there's County Community Planning. So tonight, we just have a few updates for you. I wasn't sure how much time we would have, but we also wanted to make good use of your time. So I did bring back updates on two shoreline reaches that were recently discussed. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And hopefully you're seeing a PowerPoint presentation. Okay. So as you know, the planning commission has been looking at select shoreline environment designations. And I'm going to circle back around to two that you have recently looked at. And planning commission has the latitude to recommend changes to shoreline environment designations as if those changes are supported by the criteria we have within the master program. So for posterity, for the record, as we all know by now, designating shoreline environment designations is part of the shoreline planning process. And these designations control the types of uses that are allowed on the shoreline, the permits that you need and the rules that would need to be followed. The staff analysis that I'm going to give you is based on methodology and criteria from the shoreline environment designations report. And you may not find a perfect fit with criteria with a shoreline reach. We're looking for the best fit based on the criteria in the existing conditions. And the goal of this work is to adopt shoreline environment designations that help ensure no net loss of shoreline ecological function. They are one piece of that puzzle. And we'll be looking at maps of jurisdiction, but keep in mind that the actual jurisdiction is always verified in the field. And other factors besides environment designation will affect shoreline development. So I'm going to give you an update on the Long Lake Carpenter Park property. So this is one that planning commission previously looked at. And planning commission previously recommended a rural conservancy SED. It's this parcel that's circled in pink here, in the middle of Long Lake. And it's a large parcel situated in the middle of a reach that is all are, you know, vastly comprised of smaller residentially developed parcels. And this one is a bit of an outlier. So based on the ground conditions and the criteria, the planning commission initially recommended rural conservancy. It was later brought to my attention that this parcel is actually in the urban growth area, as is all of Long Lake. And therefore, really what we should have been looking at is the urban conservancy criteria. So I did go back and take a look at that and what that criteria would mean for this parcel, whether it would be a good fit. And it does appear to be in line with the urban conservancy SED. So this is just a me letting you know that unless there are any concerns, questions from planning commission, that my recommendation and then taking this forward would be using urban conservancy because this parcel is indeed in an urban growth area. It's planned for development. You know, development out there could be compatible with maintaining or restoring ecological function of the area because it does retain function, it does have room for development, and there is potential for ecological restoration going forward. So I'll pause there. So it's just more of an FYI that I was planning to shift planning commissions' recommendation to urban conservancy. Are there any questions or concerns with that approach?
This is Kevin. Actually, I have a point of order.
Sure.
Chair Casino. Chair Casino, uh, I previously had raised the topic of uh, conflicts of interest and what is our policy around those? And there's a lot of disagreement amongst the group. Uh, but I've gone in and looked further. I looked at our rules of procedure, which are really only operational in the description of how to handle uh, procedurally handle a situation if a commissioner feels they have a conflict and wants to recuse themselves or abstain from a vote. Um, I looked up on the MRSC Metropolitan uh, uh, Resource and Service Center for Washington State. Uh, and if any of you want to search it, um, just type in MRSC Appearance of Fairness Doctrine. Um, and it very clearly looks through Washington State law and refers to RCW about quasi judicial actions and defines those. Uh, many of the activities we engage in are included in that. Um, it very specifically refers to which bodies of governments uh, would qualify for this and planning commissions are very specifically listed as being some that are required to follow these laws. And it's an appearance of fairness doctrine, which basically says if anybody has any connection to uh, that, that the, the, the people making the decisions need to be impartial. And so uh, I raise it again as a concern that we're making decisions specifically about Long Lake now. Uh, and we've got members of the planning commission who are involved with that. I believe. And so uh, I think there's a concern there that we might be making decisions that could be in the future invalidated.
Uh, thank you for your comments on that. Um, if you have a suggestion on how you would prefer to see this move forward, we could certainly consider them.
I just feel like if any members of the planning commission are involved with organizations representing long lake residents that they probably ought to abstain from this discussion and voting.
Okie dokie. Um, with that, uh, I guess the question still stands with uh, Andrew, do you need like a formal motion or anything to go through residential or a rural conservancy changing that to urban conservancy? Or do you just, you want to look to see if anybody would have a um, problem with doing that and then just do it?
I, I, yeah, I was more just making uh, you could certainly make a motion if you wanted to. Um, I was kind of providing an update here because the planning commission had previously made a motion to go through rural conservancy. And this was an update that actually if no one objects, let's make it urban conservancy because it is in the urban growth area.
Would there be any objections from the planning, any planning commissioners for changing this to more accurately reflect what it is since it is in an urban growth area? Hearing no objections, Andy, I think that you can move forward with that.
Perfect. Yep. Just, that's great. I just wanted to give you an update on that and um, also that has the support of uh, our ecology liaison. I spoke, speaking with her today and she said, that sounds great. So wonderful. Uh, okay. Let me change my view here and I'll get back to it. And I've just got one more and then uh, can maybe turn you loose a little early tonight. Okay. So the next one is it's out on Eld Inlet. This is what we looked at uh, at the last meeting. So it's reach Eld Inlet two to Eld Inlet three. And the upper left picture there, you can see where this reach is located relative to Cooper Point Peninsula and the city of Olympia, city of Lacey. And then uh, the picture in the middle is just kind of stitched together of showing you the actual shoreline reach and the conditions. Um, this reach is currently designated rural, except a few parcels at the north end are designated conservancy. The proposal for the entire reach from the uh, SED report was shoreline residential. We had a citizen write in who lives up there at the north end and said uh, that the sand spit area specifically there with that cove should be rural conservancy and that that rural conservancy should extend a bit down from that sand spit. Staff recommended uh, proposing or retaining the proposal of shoreline residential for the entire SED. Uh, but planning commission did ask staff to explore whether rural conservancy could be applied to that area in the north. Uh, we did take a look at that and also to bring it back for full planning commission discussion because I think there were only five folks, five or six present last time. So I did go back and look at this and uh, it really won't be too hard to do. We can essentially replicate the um, shoreline reaches that are, or excuse me, the designations that are there in this reach now uh, provide rural conservancy SED to the two residential parcels at the north end and the sand spit area. Kind of looking at that uh, and looking at the criteria in that area, we do see those parcels appear to be larger than a lot of the ones that are up elsewhere in the reach. You've got homes that are set further back with fewer modifications to the buffer. And that whole spit and lagoon area, um, you know, appears to be used for public access of the folks who live in the area and for voting as well. So um, I, I think there's support for that approach if, if that is what planning commission wants to do. Um, we did draw up a map of what that would look like. So on the left here uh, would be the entire reach and it's outlined in blue. It's showing you uh, the, which portions of the reach would be uh, shoreline residential and that that north portion would be rural conservancy under that option. And on the right is a blown up image of that. And this essentially mirrors the current designations because everything that is pink in these pictures now is currently rural. Everything that's yellow is currently um, conservancy. So if planning commission wants to retain the current SEDs, that scheme of of designations, we could do that. We county. So my question for planning commission is, does this proposed map accurately capture uh, the way that planning commission would like to go? And I'll open it up to questions and discussion.
Does anybody have any questions on this one? Would anybody care to make a motion on this? Or Commissioner Wheatley, were you about to say something?
No, it's okay.
Sorry. Okay. Would anybody care to make a motion on this? I'll make a motion that we go with the staff recommendation to uh, divide that area up into rural conservancy and shoreline residential, as noted by Andrew. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Andrew.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all I have for you this evening. So at the next meeting, I'll bring back the remainder of those select SED reviews that we had. Uh, there's I believe four or five left for you to look at. So I'll get a memo out for you next week. Um, so you can study up on those ahead of time and hopefully we can knock those out at the April 20th meeting. Uh, then we'll wrap up on anything that's left and I will bring back the next version of the document for your review and uh, recommendation to the board. So uh, pending any last uh, questions or comments, that, that concludes this work session for this evening.
Andrew, would those be the ones uh, for Sanderson Harbor and Eld Inlet? Is that what we'll be looking at next? Do you think?
Those were, those were the two that we just, we just, yeah, there are, um, oh God, I see if I can get this right. There's a few in Patterson Lake. There's one on Lake St. Clair. Um, and there are Deschutes River and there might be one more, uh, one more on Elden. So, so yeah, so there's five that you have not yet seen. Um, but then that should be, that's all that we have received during the public comment period.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be moving on to other business and first there will have um, staff updates. Christina.
Thank you, planning commissioners. Um, the staff update I have for you today goes along with the um, docket memo that I provided you all. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted um, the official 2022, 23 dockets, and that is both the comprehensive plan dockets and the development code dockets. Yes, we're special. We have two dockets um, as required in title 2.05. Those dockets are the planning commissioners' work plans. That's what staff will be working on and bringing forward to you for your guidance, recommendations and information moving those uh, particular issues and items forward. I guess I can, I will ask if there's any questions about the legislative processes that go along with this. I provided you attachment A so that new commissioners or to refresh some of our commissioners that have been on this board for some time, what that process looks like in full. It's not just the board's process. It's not just the planning commission's process, but it's everybody's process and how that all fits together. The planning commission work or the work will, we will begin um, as staff and planning commission together actually starts on page two. It's step two where staff starts to do all of its research. Um, and then we'll start bringing you stuff. So is there any questions there? I see Commissioner.
Question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So I noticed attachment B, the two work plans or dockets. Um, the first one has for the comprehensive plan has nine items and the second one has 18 items. Are those top items and, and somewhere it was mentioned that staff in, in a two-year period only basically has the capacity to get through about 10 to 15 of these. So we've got a total of 27. Um, do you basically work on the top ones on each list concurrently or go through the first list and then work on the second list?
Yeah. So I was going to get there, but yes, these are a lot. I mean, 27 items we are not going to get through in the next two years. So the board has prioritized um, the dockets and they are um, in priority order uh, per the board's um, wishes and direction. And to answer your question, Kevin, yes, we work on the top um, several depending on how big those comprehensive plan items are for both the comprehensive plan docket and the development code docket. So um, you will see both types of amendments come through from both dockets and we will start to work our way down.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Thanks. Well, first of all, thanks a lot for this memo. Yeah. I really appreciate it. I uh, I guess I kind of had a similar question to, to Kevin, like because I know that you have to do the work on these. So I understand they're in priority order, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's the order that they're going to come to us, right? Because it kind of depends on different amounts of work.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah. Okay. So I get that, which is great. Um, maybe you could give us some hints about, you know, which ones are high priorities that are going to be kind of late to the party. So that's, that's one question. And then another is, you know, I really liked uh, you know, Christie White's comments because it kind of goes to some of the, what I was going to ask for for the agenda discussion, but is there anything stopping uh, the planning commission from taking on, you know, deciding that it's interested in some of the lower priority things? And just like she suggested, making a subcommittee or something to take a look at stuff without necessarily uh, putting a burden on, you know, asking for staff time because you know, that's not what the commissioners asked for, but that we could just look at it.
So logistically, that would be interesting. Uh, staff does staff planning commission. So we would staff the um, subcommittees as well. Um, we would not be providing um, information to you all and you may get ahead of us in our research and our stakeholder um, work, which we don't necessarily want to do. We want to make sure that we're working in um, conjunction with each other. So um, it's not recommended that planning commission take on other items that um, staff is not working on. However, if the planning commission would like to take a deeper dive into some of the pieces and parts that we will be bringing forward. Um, I do encourage uh, the subcommittees to take deeper looks into portions of those um, items.
Thank you. Uh, Christina, on staff updates.
Yes.
I guess first of all, we should say congratulations on your job promotion. It's, uh, I'm glad that that has finally become official. And the, the other part of that, it seems like uh, uh, at the higher level, has there been changes in staffing at the higher level? I, I've seen that um, I've seen that Jennifer Walker is now being referred to as interim county manager. Has there been a staff change at that level?
That is new news to me.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll let that question go. Um, with that, uh, I guess we should also ask how is staffing in your department now that you've been bumped up and have you been able to fill the positions with the rest of the planners?
So we're working on backfilling my position, um, an open associate planner position. So we're, we're working on it and we're getting closer to having um, a full cast of characters um, that will come before you.
Are you three FTE short right now?
Yes.
That's a lot. All right. Well, thank you. Let's move on then to the next item, which is uh, calendars and tentative agenda items. And then we will also include Commissioner Wheatley's can, um, topic in there too. So
Chair. Before you move on, I'm sorry. Um, two more things. I wanted to um, address some of the public comments that came in this morning or this afternoon. Um, one, the move CPED is moving. Um, we don't have information about we have a general idea about when summer. Um, and yes, the planning commission will come with us. So when we make that move, we will keep you informed as to what's going on. The board is handling um, that information. Uh, the second one was in-person meetings. We are set up and ready to do hybrid meetings. If the planning commission would like to start that um, April 20th.
If uh, the hybrid meeting would be, would still allow any commissioners to zoom in if they chose, right?
That is correct.
Would anybody care to make a motion about moving to a hybrid meeting?
So moved. Second.
Okay. There's been a motion put forward and seconded to move to hybrid meetings, which would include both a in-person portion and a Zoom portion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So Christine, if you get us set up with that, that'd be awesome.
Yep. We'll see you next in two weeks.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we're going to move on to uh,
Very. Excuse me for interrupting. I, I would add something to that. I would hope that if a planning commissioner can make the meeting that they do attend, that, you know, if you're out of town, it's great that you're still able to attend even though you're out of town. But um, if you're in town, I would hope that you'd be there because there's a great benefit to interacting with the, the public that comes to the meetings as well as amongst ourselves. So.
Thank you, Doug. So for attendance for our April 20th meeting where the tentative schedule has shoreline master program wireless update, follow-ups, open space, non-conforming code updates. Uh, does everybody, is there anybody that is not expecting to be able to make it? All right. It looks like we should have a full house. And then the May 4th meeting, we're tentatively going to discuss shoreline master program, have a, well, we will not have a public hearing on the non-conforming. Uh, yeah, but maybe we can have a work session on that, but I guess that's up to you, Christina. Uh, is there anybody that cannot make it to the May 4th meeting? All right. It looks like we'll have a full house there. Commissioner Wheatley, would you like to uh, address yours?
Yeah. Well, maybe May 4th is the, is the slot. Um, I was wondering if we could request a briefing um, on the review and update process for the comprehensive plan. It's got to be finished by 2025. Um, there's supposed to be a public participation program that goes with that process. I'm hearing a lot about it going to the um, the um, growth management board meetings, the, of the Puget Sound Regional Council that I do uh, on behalf of um, the TRPC. And so it's making me a little nervous that we're not talking about it. Um, so I'm wondering if we could just maybe start talking about it by having just a briefing on how the county is approaching that update process. And yeah, if we're, if we have an open slot on May 4th, maybe that'd be a good time to do it. If people are interested.
I, I personally think that wouldn't be a bad idea either, but um, that would be up to uh, staff if they were able to prepare, prepare anything for that.
So we can start the discussions about what a comprehensive plan update is.
So we can start the discussions about what a comprehensive plan update is and um, our limited scoping that we have currently done. Um, because we are short-staffed, some of the items that aren't prioritized, uh, we haven't done a a lot of work on, but we can start the discussion um, in just a high overview of what it is and um, our general part of public participation plan and how we've handled this in the past.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, with that, is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have something.
Please go ahead.
Uh, so I heard uh, that there historically was an annual meeting between county commissioners and planning commissioners. It might've even been a dinner. Um, and that that sort of fell away during the COVID pandemic. Um, but that Romero Chavez may be looking at schedules and possibly trying to reschedule something like that for us. Um, I think just like in-person meetings have a lot of value for getting to know each other and and to get to know the public better as well, that, that would have great potential value for us to get to hear from the county commissioners specifically what they're looking for from us. So I would encourage that.
That would be great. All right. Is there anything else? All right. That sounds like we have it all done for tonight. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.